Welcome everyone to the September 11th Planning Board Hearing.
Morris Township, New Jersey. The legal notice requirement in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act has been satisfied, and a statement certifying same has been executed. Now I ask everyone to please rise.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Plan of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask everyone to please remain standing. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. A former board member Jeremiah Jerry Lohman passed away. So I'd like to offer Jerry a moment of silence, and I'd like to have a moment of silence for the victims and the first responders of the terrorist attack in September 11th, 2001, 22 years ago already. So let's give them a moment of silence, please.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, everybody, please put your cell phones on mute. Silence or off, whatever you prefer. And Sonia, will you take us through the roll call?
Mr. Barrett.
Here.
Ms. Flowers.
Here.
Ms. Rabbit.
Here.
Ms. Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Benoit.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Alessa.
Here. Our professionals.
Oh, God. Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mr. Slate.
Here.
And I'm from San Diego here.
Sonia, I think Mr. Bai is joining us remotely. I don't know if we need to swear him in or call his role. I didn't hear him say here.
Mr. Bai.
Oh, I'm here. I didn't think I could participate remotely.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bai can participate as a member for quorum purposes for all matters, but it's my recommendation that he not be part of the quorum for the one public hearing that we have on the land development application.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. He'll be advised and act accordingly. So let us move into our first hearing. Sonia, you want to tee it up?
About the minutes.
Oh, minutes. We have lots of minutes, yes.
Lots of minutes.
No.
We almost have an hour worth of minutes.
Why don't we go through the hearing first and then we'll do the minutes after that?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Linda Hurley with the firm of Riker Danzig on behalf of the applicant.
Excuse me, can I ask you just to speak? Because I'm not sure it's going to record properly if you're not screaming into the microphone.
I'm not screaming into it. Is that better? Linda Hurley with the firm of Riker Danzig on behalf of the applicant, Morris Marketplace Urban Renewal Entity LLC. We're here before you tonight for a minor subdivision application that proposes to create two lots at the Morris Marketplace site. The proposal is basically to carve out the building that's been referred to as Commercial H, along with a portion of the parking area. This new lot will ultimately be owned and operated by Lidl, the supermarket company. This subdivision is contemplated, or this type of subdivision is contemplated by the redevelopment plan that governs the site. Specifically, the redevelopment plan provides that in order to provide design flexibility, there shall be no minimum lot area depth, width, or yard requirements, and that a lot may be created without frontage on a public street, provided that such lot has appropriate access to a public street and the right of access is established by an easement recorded in the clerk's office or otherwise provided by law. There will be, there is proposed a reciprocal easement agreement that the subdivision is approved, the two lots would enter into the agreement. It provides for, among other things, cross-parking, cross-access. There will be no physical changes to the site. There'll be no perceivable changes to the site. It will continue to operate as one development. But this is being done to allow for separate ownership of these two lots. With that, I have one witness this evening, our engineer, Anand Bhatt of Arna Engineering. So if there are no questions or objections, I would call my first witness.
And with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'll swear him in as well as our board professionals.
Excellent. Thank you.
Do all three of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Right hand.
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, let us proceed with Mr. Bhatt's qualifications.
Thank you. Anand, if you would give your qualifications to the board. You did, just to back up, you have testified before this board before, correct?
I have.
And in connection with applications having to do with this site in particular?
Correct.
But if you would, for the benefit of those, give them your background, your experience.
Sure. Good evening, board members. My name is Anand Bhatt. I'm with Arna Engineering. I have a bachelor's and master's in civil engineering and a professional engineering license in good standing since 2003.
I think they are acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you would explain to the board then the subdivision that we proposed, you prepared the subdivision plan that was submitted to the board in connection with the application?
I did.
And if you would, I don't know if you want to use the board or if we're going to bring up?
I think so.
Do you want me to bring it up?
Yes.
Can you please bring up the next one?
While they're doing that, just for the record, this is the last revised August 1st, 2023. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. We don't have to mark it as an exhibit. It's more than 10 days.
Thank you. As the board can see on the plan on the screen here, there are the existing properties located along Hanover Avenue and two accesses along Martin Luther King as well as the Menon Drive. The Lidl parcel, which is located to the north northwest corner of the property, I would say, that's Lidl Building, which is to the end of the it's a strip retail center. And Lidl parcel is about 1.86 acres, which is being carved off a total of 18 acres, 18 plus acres, 18.7 acres. And as Linda had mentioned, the property has a proper access through the easement to the Menon Drive as well as to the Martin Luther King Avenue. The goal is to subdivide the property for the sale to the Lidl, the grocery store, which is intent for the owner to sell it so that they have a certain lease, and that was the lease requirement that they will sell it at the end of the project, which is what we are here for.
Can you, we received the only reports that we have, we have a TCC report.
Yep.
Can you go through the TCC report and?
Yeah. We met with the township staff, Mrs. Slate, Mr. Warner, and Mr. Phillips on July 20th. And at that meeting, we discussed few minor housekeeping items which were requested to be addressed, and that's what we have done. First comment is related to the number of parking spaces located within the lot area itself. Although, as Sorely suggests, recommended or clearly dictated that the items which are located in the bulk requirements are not required to be met for individual lot. And under the redevelopment plan, we have listed the number of parking spaces which are located within the parcel, which is 104, number of parking spaces is 104. And total required is 146 for the retail. However, there is a shared parking agreement in place for the overall shopping center, and that shopping center requirement is 693 spaces, whereas we have 718 spaces. Hence, we comply with the overall parking requirement with the shared parking with the other units. The second comment is related to a name of the plan which has been addressed. The comment number three is related to the lot number and how the common elements are defined, and there are no common elements, so it has been removed. And the last comment was related to the we need to contact with the building department regarding the firewall between building F and G, which is the common wall between building Lidl, Lidl Building and the next building, which is Burlington Code Factory. And we are working, we spoke to the duower and we are working with the township building department and the inspector, and we are working closely to figure out the solution, what we need to do about the separation between building G and F. So those were the four comments which we had received from later dated July 31st from TCC.
And if with respect to the firewall or the wall between buildings G and F, if the code, the building code or the fire code requires that we build that firewall, we will do that before CO, correct?
That is my understanding from speaking with the duower. They are working with the building code officials closely.
I have a quick question. You mentioned G and F. Isn't it not G and H?
Oh, G and H.
G and H, sorry. Sorry, let me see.
Because we are H and it's a G and F in here.
Yeah, the TCC reports are G and F, but you're correct.
It's H and G, yes.
G and H, yeah. My bad.
I don't have anything further for.
Okay, we'll ask the board members if they have any questions. We'll start.
I have, I have a couple of nitpicky questions that probably don't mean anything. But when I read the TCC report from July 31st and I look at the drawing that's been submitted, there's a significant difference between the acreage, 1.786 in the TCC report and 1.860 in the drawing. So can you tell us which is the right number?
1.860 is the right number.
Okay, so there was a typo or a misunderstanding in the TCC report. Thank you. I guess my question regarding the firewall is why wasn't that already in place? They're two separate businesses. I'm not sure why we wouldn't have had a firewall there to begin from.
We have a report from the fire chief saying, "After conducting a plan review for application, blah, 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 for regarding the proposed subdivision of the existing commercial property, I have no questions or concerns for the applicant providing fire protection." So.
My understanding is it's a building code question and that it does have to do with the difference between different owners as opposed to different occupants.
Oh, I, okay, because it's going to be a separate ownership?
Yeah, I don't profess to understand the code entirely, but that's my understanding of it and what they're looking into, yeah.
And you're, I'm sorry to interrupt you. And you said that you were in the process of working with the township?
Talking with the, yes, with the code official. And we'd be amenable to a condition that if it's, you know, if it is required by code, we will do it, obviously.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, on that note, and I apologize for interrupting, but we do have language that I think would be acceptable if required by the applicable building code or other applicable regulatory requirement. The applicant shall construct a firewall or similar separation between buildings H and G prior to receipt of a certificate of occupancy in accordance with such building code or other regulatory requirements, if that's what the board desires. I understand that the applicant would stipulate to that.
Yes, that's correct.
So if we get to a point where we have approval, that would be one of the?
That would be in the resolution of approval. Correct, and I'm assuming, and I'm hogging my interruption here, but do they have a temporary COO already, but this would be for a final COO? Or do they not have a temporary COO?
I don't know the answer to that.
Isn't the grand opening on Wednesday?
I thought it was.
I hope they have a COO. I read it in the paper.
Well, in any event.
They can't open with a TCO.
A TCO, yeah, yeah.
And I believe.
It's a fair assumption.
I believe that the, and just some clarification going back. This may help answer your question with the lot size. There was, and maybe it didn't change, but there was, you know, a couple of different concepts that we looked at at the TCC, and it may have been one that had a different lot area. But I think that the, it's my understanding that between G and H, there's two separate walls and the issue is not at that location. It is actually, I believe, between F and G, a potential issue. That separation because there was not two separate walls, you know, constructed, you know, at that location. But, you know, just by further way of explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Slate. Ms. Murphy?
I don't have anything else.
Mr. Benoit?
I'm just curious. If you're buying this property, then you would have the right to turn around and lease it to somebody else or sell it or?
The owner would control the property. That is correct. It would always be subject to the reciprocal easement agreement, so it would always be subject to cross-access and parking and, you know, everything that goes along with that. So it could never try to separate itself out from the rest of the center. But could Lidl lease it out to another tenant? Yes, just the way right now Morris Marketplace could enter into a lease with someone else for that particular location.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, necessarily have a problem if I just, it was a new idea to me, I thought, oh, that's a possibility. Other than that, no, I don't have any.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Does this, do the 104 parking places on the site include any EV spaces?
Question. I don't think so. I don't have those on this plan, but I do not believe there are EV spaces.
Because we do have an ordinance on EV, but I, so I guess that would be a question for our professionals. The required number of EV spaces are by the site and none of them are on the Lidl site. Is that correct?
I would think that that's accurate, Kathy, because I'm jogging my memory. When this was approved, my recollection is that they were compliant with the EV charging requirements, which were, I think, part of the redevelopment at the time. And I think that actually predated the state legislation, but they were in compliance. But I think we just heard from the witness that none of those spaces are on the area which is being subdivided for Lidl. That should not matter again. The same with the issue of the parking. They need everything overall. This is just sort of an imaginary lease line that no one's going to know exists other than Lidl and Morris Marketplace.
And the financing entity.
Well, so, so on the 104 places, those parking spots that are in place, I think there were 129 required by the square footage, correct?
146.
146.
I'm sorry?
146.
Okay, so in other words, there's spillover parking that's taking place on the rest of the site. Is that language included in the, anywhere in writing? Or, I mean, it's just, it's assumed?
There's a reciprocal, there's a reciprocal easement agreement that if this is approved, the Lidl lot will be Lot 3.06. So that Lot 3.06 will enter into a Lot 3.01 that will basically say, among other things, that everyone can use everyone's parking, everyone can ride on everyone's drive aisles. Again, the site will not operate any differently than it does now. Everything is shared. No, someone out there would not know the difference. They wouldn't know they're on Lidl's lot versus the rest of the property. So, yeah.
If, I'm sorry. I was going to dovetail on the answer if I may, but.
I just think that I just saw five spaces that look like they're electric on the long side of that building.
I thought those were handicapped.
Are those handicapped?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So they are handicapped and not EV? Because I do think if there are EV spots on the property, that I know those kind of go along with the whole site. So there would need to be some kind of agreement on maintenance and upkeep and all that. But what you're saying is that the EV spaces are not on the slot at all.
I think they, I think they, they're still, and I don't mean to answer for the applicant, I apologize, but I'm pretty sure they're still obligated for the same maintenance site-wise. And that would be part of the cross-access agreements and the cross-maintenance agreements.
For all the tenants?
For the owners.
For the owners as well.
The two lot owners.
Because the owners, the owner, Marstown, the urban renewal entity, I guess it is, owns the entirety of this lot and even post-subdivision will, but for the relatively small 10% almost portion that would be owned by Lidl if there's an approval of the subdivision. So.
But what I'm getting at is Lidl doesn't have any responsibility for maintaining directly, maintenance of EV charging stations.
I don't know the details. I didn't prepare. I don't know the details of the declaration, the cross-access agreement, well enough to know if Morris Marketplace is maintaining full maintenance of all of the EV stations or if Lidl has to maintain any of them. But in any event, they will be maintained, whether it's one party or the other. I don't know if there's a shared cost arrangement. I'm not sure the details of who maintains it, but the maintenance will not change. The fact that they need to be maintained today will not change tomorrow after a subdivision. They'll still be maintained.
But does this need to be part of your agreement, you know, finalizing all your paperwork?
It may be part of the agreement. Again, I have not, and I personally not been party to the negotiations on that agreement, but someone, again, Morris Marketplace, the EV stations will be on what will remain the Morris Marketplace Urban Renewal Property. So unless there's an agreement to the contrary, that puts some of the burden of maintaining those on Lidl, the maintenance will remain with Morris Marketplace.
Okay. Thank you.
Just piggybacking off what Committeewoman Wilson had brought up, it's not just the EV, it's the whole maintenance of the parking area of which the EV is part of. So I would hope that in the agreement between Lidl and Morris Marketplace that the entire lot, the lighting, the paving, the striping, all that is all maintained. It's all spelled out. Other than that, I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers.
We, I'm sorry, we can, if the board so desires and the applicant stipulates, we can have that condition in any approval, even though it would be, in essence, required anyway. Just to be crystal clear, that all obligations remain, be they either the obligation of the urban renewal entity, Lidl, or a combination of the two.
I think that's a good idea.
We can have that general language in there. Belt and suspenders is never a bad idea, in my opinion.
Flowers?
And with the applicant stipulate.
Mr. Barrett?
There's no additional obligation.
No additional obligation, just confirming it's covered by Lidl, the urban renewal entity or a combination of the two, you know, pursuant to their documentation. And we can have a copy of the final, we have a copy of the draft declaration. We can have a copy of the, the working, the C N's professionals could receive a copy of the final declaration.
I certainly, yeah, I believe that'll even be recorded once it's final and.
That's true. It'll be a public record.
It'll be a public record.
Or we just make it a condition of the resolution.
Yep, we will.
Yeah, Counsel, I have two quick questions. I think you mentioned that it was contemplated in the redevelopment plan that Lidl would subdivide the lot.
It's contemplated in the redevelopment plan that the lot could be subdivided for either financing or separate ownership purposes such that it doesn't, the subdivided lots wouldn't have to independently comply with all of the various requirements of the redevelopment plan, as long as the overall lot continued to comply.
I see. And so Lidl is seeking to have ownership of this?
Of that one piece, yeah.
Right. I take it then that some of the other lessees could come forward and seek subdivision as well?
That's always a potential. It is possible, yeah, that we'd have to come back to the board for further approval. Yes, if we wanted to do that.
So sitting here today, is any of that in the works? Are you aware of any other lessees seeking to do the same thing?
We are contemplating, yes, coming back in for potential further subdivision. We're not sure how many or exactly what time, but it's possible, yeah.
And my second question is if we approve the subdivision, would that have any negative impacts on the remaining leases between your client and the other tenants?
When you say negative impacts?
In other words, would it trigger some default of any provision or impact any provision? Okay. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Just a couple of comments and maybe a question or two, if I may. The, and just to reiterate, it is correct that the redevelopment plan does contemplate the possibility of subdivisions for financing and/or related purposes. Specifically, it says in 6A, "The retail/commercial component and the residential and open space components and its subcomponents may be subdivided, subject to planning board approval, of course, to allow for separate ownership and/or for financing purposes." So that is an accurate statement. I just want to put on the record exactly where it's located. And I think it is also an accurate statement by the applicant that there is a cross-access agreements, parking agreements, and specific parking requirements that are set forth in what we have received from the applicant as a draft. Declaration can't be final until after approval, if there is an approval. And those are at Section 4A and 4F, and I did have an opportunity to review those, and they do accurately, in my opinion, carry forward the cross-access and cross-parking requirements. As I understand the application, the fact, and the reason why the request was made by the other board professionals, and please correct me if I'm wrong, other board professionals, as to how the parking worked out for this particular lot, because of those cross-parking and cross-access agreements, the site is viewed for parking purposes as one total lot. But we were curious, at the very least, to see the extent to which the Lidl lot in and of itself would cover its own parking, for lack of a better term. And there is about a 42 parking space difference, if I did the math right. And I guess one question to state the obvious is there are a couple of lots or a couple of rows of parking nearby. And if I'm counting them correctly, there's about 20 spots in front of Lidl immediately to the, I lost my direction. I think that's south of the Lidl lot. And then there's another line of about 23 spaces. And behind that, there's about seven spaces as well, fronting on Hanover. So I take it part of the argument is that aside from the fact that you're contending you don't need to actually have self-sufficient parking within the Lidl lot itself. Not only are there cross-access and cross-parking agreements throughout, you know, with the other tenants with respect to the lot in its entirety, but you have about 43 or 50 relatively nearby spaces. Is that correct?
That is correct.
My apologies. Bear with me. Actually, I think that's, that's all I had. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Phillips?
Just one. I noticed that the plans show that the pylon signs in a number of locations are shown as common elements. And then I noticed that behind the Lidl store, actually behind the commercial G, there is a trash enclosure that is shown and depicted as a limited common element. And I noticed that other trash enclosures throughout the center were not so designated. Can you explain that? Is that because it's being used by certain entities within the center?
You're correct, Mr. Phillips. The limited common element, which is the trash enclosure, that is being used for Lidl, and that's on the separate lot. That is the reason for that to be a limited common element. The rest of the trash enclosures are on the lot which is being served, so that's why there is no limited common element.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
And that's only for Lidl?
Lidl, yes.
So Burlington, which is right up on that property, they don't, they have, their trash is someplace else?
The Burlington trash is on the south face of the wall. If you see, there are three dumpsters.
Oh, I see. I see. Thank you.
Sure.
I know you said Mr. Bai would not vote, but would we allow him to at least ask a question?
With all due respect to Mr. Bai, since he's not here in person, he's not going to be counting towards a quorum or voting on this particular application. All other matters, though, are non-land use development application hearings certainly can be part of the quorum and part of the deliberations of votes and what have you.
I see no other questions. We'll entertain. Have seen no other questions. We'll entertain a motion.
I move that.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we do have to go to the public. Well.
Okay.
As a formality, if nothing else.
As a formality, if there's anyone in the room that would like to speak, first pop up. Seeing none? Close the public forum, uh, public part of the hearing.
I move for the applicant's approval with the conditions as discussed, um, and anything else that our esteemed attorney would choose to add to cover.
For the second, second, there any discussion? Roll call, vote please, Mr. Santiago?
Mr. Barrett.
All right. Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Rabbit?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkins?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for the presentation.
I hope the opening goes well.
See you there.
Yeah.
Actually, 7:45.
Are you gonna be there for the ribbon?
Yeah. So now we'll jump into the minutes. If we could start with the.
Can we do like, because everyone like is not prepared for all the reading, so we go by the attendance of the minutes for the opening?
We will do it however you'd like. You're doing such a good job with the minutes. Why not?
Thank you. Okay. Do we have a motion for the June?
We, are we starting with the June 5th minute?
Yeah.
So do we have a motion to approve the June 5th minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we have any amendments to the June minutes? And we need a roll call for the June minutes or is it a hand vote?
Just a voice vote is fine and we can keep track of who's, uh, who would be in abstention if they weren't there that evening.
So Sonia, you're gonna have to help us out because June 5th could have been like 20 years ago. I don't know who was here and who was not.
Oh, but it's right on there.
It's on the minutes. It's on here.
I left my package wrong.
You're here.
I left my package wrong. All right. Thank you. Thank you. We're here.
I guess like all in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
Okay. Let's do November 7th, 2022.
Now we're going back a little more in the memory banks.
Yeah, it was an interesting read. Oh, we did this then?
Okay. So I was there. I will, uh, move this one.
Do we get a second?
I'll second. Uh, yes, you were.
Okay. Does anyone have any changes or amendments to the minutes? And can we get a voice vote to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving right along, November 14th.
You were there. Move to approve.
Do we get a second? Any amendments to the minutes? All in favor? Voice vote?
Aye.
Excellent. November 21st. Wow, we did three in November.
I'm abstaining from November 21st because I was not there.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move it.
I'll second.
Okay.
Do we get a second?
I'll second.
Second, thank you. Does anyone have any changes or amendments to the minutes and a voice vote? Aye. Last one. December 5th. And we get a mi, uh, motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
And a second, please?
Second.
Great. Any amendments or changes to the minutes? Voice vote? Aye.
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 Excellent. We've now approved our minutes. We can move on to legislative.
Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia.
Let's move on to the legislative committee report, if there is one.
The only thing I have, um, Kathy will definitely correct me if I'm wrong, uh, you already have down here ordinance 1823. Uh, which was rezoning some of, um, Jones Woods from RH5 to OSGU. And just as a matter of interest, uh, for the planning board, uh, we did purchase in July, um, it reads, uh. 15 dash 23, the purchase of a property on Old Turnpike Road.
Great.
Kathy, you.
I would say also you might, can you provide an update on the cannabis advisory board? Which does connect eventually with zoning.
Yes, we've had, uh, two meetings with the cannabis board. Our next meeting is going to be, I believe, on the 19th. Uh, we do have a, we do have an outside professional coming in. Um, originally that meeting was canceled, but, uh. For scheduling purposes, we, we put it back on the calendar. Uh, so far, the last meeting we heard, uh, from, uh, Chief Shearer. Who gave us, who answered, really was on the hot seat for, uh, about an hour and a half answering questions. We, we have a, an excellent group of people, um, asking questions, a lot of brain power in their room and, um. At, at the end, I think there's going to be three more meetings that are on the schedule. And then Mayor Giorfi will, uh, culminate everything by writing a report, uh, which will be submitted to the township committee. Based on the findings. So we're still in the fact finding mode. What's going to be interesting next. Uh, the next meeting is one of the things that, you know, a lot of towns have heard. Was that there's so much money, like a pot of gold at the end of the rainbow with collecting, you know, taxes, uh, 2% of gross revenues. Um, but the reality might be different from what we've been hearing. So, uh, we're going to be hearing. Uh, from this professional to talk about more of what we actually might be able to expect. If we do, uh, allow a license or one or more licenses for the township. So that'll be enlightening. And then, of course, the public is, is, um, encouraged to attend, uh, but we will have a public, um, uh. Commentary at our last meeting. So, um, this is kind of where we are right now and, uh. Looking forward to, you know, learning more.
Thank you, counsel.
That's it.
Great. Sonia, want to walk us through the 2024 calendar review?
This is the predicted calendar for 2024.
What time will the meeting start?
Seven o'clock. On the, on the wise.
And Sonia and I did go through the calendar in detail, looked at holidays. I mean, that's why there's some, uh, months that we only have one meeting just because there was a conflict, uh, you know, with the holiday. But, uh, we took all that stuff into consideration.
Mr. Warner, do we need to approve the calendar?
Wait, no, this is just for, uh. Well, do we have, you know? Yeah, we don't have to.
We approve it in January.
Oh, very good.
Okay. Um, we just.
And in January, it'll be, it'll be published in two newspapers once formally.
You're just scaring us now.
No, I'm not scaring you. The reason why.
Asbury Park Press?
What's that?
Asbury Park Press?
Or if you have any conflicts with any other day, like I brought to my attention, graduation. What date is that? Um, Mr. Murphy, can you please help?
It's in June.
Uh, June.
Yeah.
June 17th. Okay.
Yeah. So Freling Heisen. Uh, well, it would be a problem for me because I won't be here. Uh, Freling Heisen Middle School, uh, graduation. Which is really a stepping up ceremony, um, is a requirement for board members to attend. So I'll be there instead of here. I made a couple of other kind of tongue in cheek comments. April 1st is April Fool's Day. And it also happens, yeah, it also happens to be the first day of spring break for the Marshall District. So there may be some, you know, problematic, um, situations there for people participating in the April 1st date. And April 15th is the last day for submitting your federal income taxes. So there could be some conflict there as well, although I'm not suggesting any change to the calendar. I'm just pointing out.
Thank you.
I don't believe there's anything in the municipal land use law regarding either April 1 or April 15.
Anyone else have, have any other comments? Okay, then we'll move on. Great. We are now at the 2017 master plan recommendation review list.
Are we, are we doing this ordinance or?
Yeah, you gotta do the ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped right over that.
So just by way of background, there's a, a couple of old parcels on the, uh. Zoning map that still carried the designation of RH5. I think this goes back to the first or second round. There's the, uh, Jones Woods Pond is a separate lot. I mean, obviously that is not going to be developed. And then there's, uh, two other parcels that, uh, you know, just touch and they're upstream of the Jones Woods Pond. Um, that are, you know, zoned RH5, but it wasn't envisioned, um, you know, that they would be golfed. They're, they're really open space and the zoning is incorrect, so they should be, uh, OSGU zone. So it's a, a correction on the tax map. I think one of those lots is already on the, on the open space Rossi.
I have one question. Um, I'm not sure if we are going to do the master plan, but whatever, I was looking at the master plan and. There is in the back of the 2017 master plan, the Rossi, right? And I noticed that there was nothing from Jones Woods on the Rossi. At least that was there. So I guess my question is, when did it get added? But whatever is on the Rossi already, do you know when it got added?
Uh, I don't know. When you're talking about the, uh, 2017 reexamination report.
Yes.
So I'm not, uh, I'm not sure when it, uh, would have been added, but I would, uh. I would have thought that it would have been on that.
I know. I was sort of puzzled. I thought maybe it. I don't know.
What do you suggest?
I suggest that you approve this and refer it back. I guess we get this master plan consistency.
First, I suggest we hear from our planner, uh, Mr. Phillips, uh, to opine as to whether or not it's consistent with master plan.
Excellent suggestion.
But I would concur with Mr. Slate in anticipation of his, uh, recommendation.
So speaking directly to Ms. Wilson's question. About the Rossi versus the Jones.
Uh, well, everything will be going on the Rossi. So if it's not on there, it will be. Yeah. But, uh, you know, I was informed that it's, one of these lots is currently on the Rossi.
There's no way I would move this forward without Mr. Phillips having an opportunity.
Can, can I ask for clarification on the comment that said we purchased property on Old Turnpike Road? That's not going to be associated with this? No. Together or does that's going to be separate?
No, that's going to be used for, by the Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay. Okay. I just, I've got a little confused over whether we, we're amending this or.
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
That was just a, just a kind of a point of interest.
All right.
Let's throw it to Mr. Phillips.
I have a question. Is that this come as a surprise to you, Mr. Santiago? Has this gone through first reading?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, and I apologize for not doing a usual level of scrutiny on this, but I believe, Jim, that it, for at least two of the three. And I looked at this, Kathy knows I looked at this months ago, that I believe the land use map is still showing. RH5 on at least two of, of three of the parcels, which means that would not be consistent with the master plan. Which means that either, you know, we would need to do a, an amendment, which we haven't done. Or the governing body would have to state reasons why in a resolution at the time they would adopt that second reading, meaning public hearing.
I think that, I like that option. We've done that before.
Yeah. And I'm, and I'm sorry that this is just, I didn't realize this was on the agenda. Uh, and I didn't realize it had gone to a first reading, Jim. So I apologize for that. But my recollection and Kathy, you and I had conversations months ago about this whole thing. And, uh, when I researched it, it was like, you know, this was never cleaned up, meaning it was never cleaned up from the land use element. In which was consistent with the zoning classifications. So I, unless Jim or, or Steve has researched this further and think I'm all wet. I believe we do have a consistency problem here.
I did not look at the, uh, land use element.
Can I make the comment here?
Please. Yeah.
I would, I, I have noted that in the, uh. Oh, the 2000 master plan and reexamination. Plate nine, it's noted that the RH5 zoning for Jones Woods lots is listed on the 1994 land use plan. May be changed to OSGU. Didn't say they had, but in the 2000, it says they may be changed to OSGU.
Yeah. Rick, I think what my recollection was is that when I researched this, at least one of the sites, there was a recommendation. In the intervening reexamination report post 1994 that acknowledged that. And I have to look at the exact language to see whether or not that rise to a level of being sort of a land use element change, which would. Address, in my opinion, the issue of consistency. But again, I'm not sure all three would be, uh, are consistent at this point.
So what I, what I heard, I, I think, is that we can make that statement, that it's not currently consistent. But there is a process at the township committee that can justify making this zoning change. So I.
If you can craft that into a motion, that would be awesome.
Well, but before you do, it, can I ask one? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Go ahead. I'm done.
So on, for the consistency piece, is it just because it's RH5, which is connected with affordable housing? Would all of the so-called affordable housing or, um, zones trigger the inconsistency with the master plan?
Only, only the zones that are specified as part of the, these three zone map changes, meaning the three RH5 parcels. That's the basis, that would be the basis, Kathy, for the inconsistency.
I only see two RH5 lots here.
Yeah.
One has the pond in it and then what, the one is adjacent.
But I think all three.
On the 2000, in the 2000 master plan, the 38 acres, uh, I think it says 38 acres have been, had been changed from RH5 to open space. It's on page 14, page 18 of the PDF of the 2000 plan, master plan reexamination.
And which one, do you know the block and lot?
Well, I don't have, is this block 401? It says lots three and seven, but, uh. I can't remember how that was subdivided because it's, uh. Well, the total is 38 acres, so I may be wrong there.
Yeah.
Um, I don't understand why the RH5 triggers master plan inconsistency.
Cause we're redesignating properties that right now is on RH5 to OSGU. And if there's no acknowledgement of that in the master plan documentation and land use element, there's an inconsistency.
Yeah. Normally you would amend it first to make it, and then you would find that the ordinance as introduced. Was consistent with that amended master plan.
Oh, the, the planning board would make the amendment or the township committee?
That, that, that would be, that's one way. Uh, yeah, that's.
And I had done this research.
Sort of a more direct way of doing it.
For, for the planning board to make the amendment and then the ordinance gets introduced by the governing body?
Even the amendment could happen in between introduction and adoption.
Oh, so the planning board could, could do that before the second read on, on September 20th?
In a public hearing context.
When is this on? And again, I apologize. I had no idea this went to first reading.
September 20th.
Last month.
It's only nine days.
Cause I, I researched this and, and what Rick is telling me is now reminding me that I researched this. I don't think all the sites are going to be consistent, but one or two may be consistent. And I guess the question is, um. Is there any way we put this off to the next meeting so that we get it right?
Um, but doesn't the proposed approach through the township committee get it right? It just.
Well.
It reverses the, it reverses the normal flow, I suppose, but.
You're correct, but as I sit here, one, if not two of the three may indeed be consistent with the master plan.
Could, could we just?
I'm fairly certain that one is not, but I, again, I had no idea that this went to first.
How fast can we know?
Not before the 20th probably. Well, would it be possible?
Yeah, but we don't have a meeting.
But the problem is we don't have a meeting.
But if the township committee, I'm sorry.
Well, what, what if we put off? I mean, couldn't we postpone the second read at the township committee to the October meeting? And then in the meantime, do the amendment at the planning board? That would make sense to me because then it's clear.
Is it, is it legal for the township committee? I mean, I, I don't know enough, so I need some help here. If we've introduced a first read, can we put off a month and then do a, the, the second read two months later?
You, you can. Uh, yeah, it's just, you know, you, obviously, uh, it's going to be a public hearing on the second reading.
Right.
So the proper notices need to be tied to. So the proper notices need to be tied to the proper date, but yeah.
Correct. You're the lawyer.
Yeah.
Isn't there a 35-day period?
To give a, there's a minimum.
But that doesn't bind the governing body for extending the Planning Board's ability to go beyond 35 days to make the recommendation, correct?
The Planning Board can take up to 35 days on referral. So.
We have 35 days from now.
From, well, from whatever the referral was.
Oh, from the original referral.
It might have been August 16th on the introduction. I don't know.
We're not gonna.
I didn't know this was 35 days.
But I think there's different ways to do it. But I hear, if I hear Paul correctly, in part, he's perhaps not even comfortable going to the statement of reasons or the reasons resolution by the governing body because he can't this evening tell us whether it's one, two, or all three that are consistent with the master plan in order to then have it moved to that next step where it would be the governing body.
We would know by the next meeting.
They would know by then.
That makes a big difference.
But we will have already violated the 35 days.
But by the center, I think we should do it right.
We don't have the ability to act tonight.
We can't act tonight.
Yeah, I mean, what do you think?
I don't know the extent to which the governing body needs this done on September 20th.
To my knowledge, there's not a time crunch to get it done by September 20th. If we could extend it to October, I believe that would be okay. If we can't extend it to October, I think we have time to reintroduce. That's my personal opinion.
As long as it's done by November because we can't introduce anything, you know, in December. So I'm with you, Kathy, that, you know, if we can get it done by November, there is no sense of urgency on this.
And having it right and having the amendment come through the Planning Board is the way to go, in my opinion.
It should be done right.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, so we'll table this to the next meeting. Mr. Phillips, you'll come back to the next meeting with your feelings on this. We'll be able to move this forward. I'm less concerned with the, having to do a master plan amendment. So long as we get it right as to what's consistent and what's not, because the governing body, as you know,
Right, can do this.
By the full authorized membership, as long as they state reasons if it's inconsistent, which I think is the way to go, rather than do a land use amendment with notice and all that.
So if everybody understands correctly, I think Paul's not contemplating amending the land use element to make everything that is not consistent, consistent. I think what he's saying is he just wants to have us weigh in when we know exactly which one or more of these lots is consistent and which ones then are not consistent, correct?
Mr. Chairman.
And then it's likely still the governing body is going to do a reasons resolution and have to have a.
And that can be put off another meeting?
Well, that's.
Or do we have to reintroduce?
You have to reintroduce because we're on a clock already, right, aren't we?
Oh, the 35, no, the governing body can afford us more than 35.
Oh, they can, okay.
Yeah.
So that's what you're looking for before?
Yeah. No, they absolutely can. They have to give us a minimum of 35.
But they can give more.
They can give, they can be beneficent, give us.
This doesn't need to get reintroduced.
This doesn't need to get reintroduced.
Mr. Warner, this is done by resolution by the governing body?
Either way, the governing body can just afford us the opportunity of, in other words, don't proceed with the adoption or, you know, the hearing yet. And that affords us the additional time.
You got a question?
Yes, I have one more question. If I understood correctly, you said RH5 is associated with affordable housing?
This is before my time, Linda, but I believe they were during one of the earlier, earlier rounds.
So my.
These sites were designated for affordable housing.
So my question.
But were never needed as part of our latest housing plan because we covered our, I knew what your question was gonna be.
I, yeah.
We fully met our obligations.
I was afraid we were gonna open up a Pandora's box.
To rezone these to open space, which is more appropriate for a land use policy.
Okay, thank you.
We're fully compliant.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna table this discussion. We're gonna put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Which is nine.
Sounds good.
Next meeting?
10-2.
10-2. Great. So we're gonna move on to the Master Plan Recommendation List Review, but I've been told that there is gonna be major changes. So I don't know how deep we want to get into it.
Well, let me weigh in on that. I wasn't sure that Mr. Slate was gonna be here. He had, the last time we met, all those months ago, he had devised a matrix and we were going through that matrix. I think it's proper to continue to go through that just to see, you know, kind of where we are as a status.
Which matrix are you talking about?
That was that spreadsheet we had, oh, so many months ago.
Is there a copy of that on the, on the website? That's it.
Unfortunately, I don't have mine with me.
Yeah, there's a copy on the website.
I don't think so, no.
Oh, the matrix.
If we can't do it tonight, then we'll do it next meeting.
Yeah. Is that the implementation bullets from, is that this basically?
When there was a spreadsheet that way.
There was a spreadsheet, yeah.
I know I have those at home. I didn't bring them.
I didn't bring the spreadsheet either.
I think we, I think we need those to refer to.
Two options on that. I mean, I, my recollection was that we did get through, you know, the inflammation, implementate, implementation, I would say that. That's directly out of the master plan, but then there was this spreadsheet that I think Paul's office may have put that together, you know, which kind of summarized things from the other, you know, the other master plans and reexamination reports. You know, if you guys want to do this at the next meeting, when you have this in front of you, maybe it's more.
I think that's better.
And then we can just carry that to the next meeting and, you know, luckily our agenda's.
Can you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Put this on the.
Mr. Chair, it might be helpful if Madam Secretary sent a note, you know, went to reminder about the meeting that we should bring our spreadsheets or bring some extra copies.
Great idea, Mr. Barrett. So Sonia, will you just remind us in our, in your way of reminding us?
She will put it on the agenda as a reminder.
Well, obviously, obviously.
To bring, oh, it didn't say to bring the.
No, it didn't.
Did you give us the hard, you gave us the hard times, right?
As I recall, we got through page three or four of the spreadsheet and then cut it there, so. I can't remember the exact number, but it was either page three or page four that we got through.
Yeah, so we're starting at the top of page five.
Great. So everyone, so homework for everyone? Review page five on.
October.
Four is done.
It'll be a quiz.
I know I have.
Give us a reminder anyway. Please, Sonia.
Please bring your documents.
No, 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 you gotta remind us on the agenda.
I'll just put it on the agenda. But next to it, I'm gonna please bring your documents.
Instead of the word continuation, you could say, please bring your documents. Thank you.
We'll put a sticky on the agenda. Please read the agenda.
So I don't want to be, I don't want to be criticized seeing a very important piece of the meeting. If anybody has crawled in and we didn't see them, comments are open. I don't see any public comments, so we'll ask if do we need a closed session? And I will entertain a moment to adjourn, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Happy.